Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council Workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
All right, well, good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session on November 22, 2022. Meeting is called to order. I'll conduct an attendance roll call, and please signify by saying "present." It's my understanding that Councilmember Turner is joining us by phone. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so if I'm doing a roll call, you would say "present"? Councilmember Turner?
Councilmember Turner's present.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Present.
Councilmember Melner?
Present.
Councilmember Hugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
He's here somewhere.
Okay, Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Chairman's present, Vice Mayor Eldama's around here somewhere. You'll have to take a note if he steps back in. With that says, Ms. Mayor, would you introduce item number one for us?
Proposed 2023 Legislative Agenda.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here to provide an update today is Ryan Lee, our Intergovernmental Programs Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. We come -- I come before you each year at the beginning of the legislative session to seek council adoption of the city's state legislative agenda. The legislative agenda defines the city's priorities for the upcoming session and will guide the city's lobbying activities at the state Capitol. Many of these slides should be familiar for each of you, as you've all experienced several sessions now. Consistent with previous council direction, we again recommending prioritizing the state legislative agenda to a few key issues to allow the city to have a stronger, more consistent message on the items of greatest priority. As you're aware, throughout the session, we will continue to provide updates to the city council on a weekly basis as new bills are introduced at the legislature or as bills are amended and reintroduced. We'll provide the weekly tracking list to each of you, as well as to our departments, and maintain our resident legislative link program. So I'll provide a brief overview of the session and some major themes we anticipate before we walk through the legislative agenda. Also joining me this afternoon is Bob Charles with First Strategic. Bob? So Bob is one of our two contract lobbyists who assist us throughout the session. So the 2023 Legislative Session, it's the 50 -- the first regular session of the 56th Arizona Legislature convenes on Monday, January 9th after the election, and I was originally scheduled to come two weeks ago and realized that's Election Day, and it would take a few weeks for us to understand the results. So now, as we see them, we have a 16-14 split in the Senate and a 31-29 split in the House. That's the same that we had in this past legislative session. So there were a couple of seats that Democrats gained in Republican areas; there were a couple of seats Republicans gained in Democratic areas, but we remain with the same numbers, which is a slight majority for the Republicans in both houses. After redistricting, we are now in six legislative districts, ranging from -- on the west district is from Yuma to the 303, so we have a very small sliver of population in that district, and we go as far east into sharing different districts with the city of Phoenix. In the Senate, we've got three Republicans and three Democrats who represent Glendale. In the House, we're represented by six Republicans and six Democrats. So we're very much even in our representation. Notable leadership positions: We have, for our House majority, Representative Ben Toma is Speaker-elect. Representative Toma lives in Glendale and is a resident of the Choya District. Leo Biassucci is the Majority Leader. He resides up in the Kingman-Lake Havasu area. And Teresa Martinez of Pinal County is our Majority Whip. For the House minority, Andres Cano is our Minority Leader-elect, along with Lupe Contreras, who will represent Glendale in the new District 22 that covers Glendale's Westgate Sports Entertainment District and our airport. And we have co-minority whips, Representative Hernandez and Representative Quinones. For the Senate, we've got Warren Peterson as President-elect. He's out of Gilbert. Sonny Borelli, out of Kingman. Lake Havasu's the Majority Leader. Sina Kerr, who represents Glendale's farthest west district, is the Majority Whip. For Senate Minority, Raquel Turan, who has represented Glendale over the last couple of years and is primarily representing the city of Phoenix, is the Minority Leader. Ms. Steve Epstein and Rosanna Gobaldon are our Minority Whips. In past years, I've provided to you a list of notable leadership positions of West Valley or Glendale legislators who chair committees. I think that's important for us to understand because it gives us access to our committee chairs and it shows the strength of the West Valley, but those assignments have not been given or have at least not been released at this time. So I'll provide an update for you in an email once those have been provided to us. So legislative outreach is one of our most focused items in government relations. This particular year has been challenging as we have new candidates and new districts that have been drawn, so there are many candidates that we have been waiting to meet, but we wanted to wait until after the election. So there's going to be a lot of work between now and the start of session to try to line up meet and greets, and I hope that we can, as staff, can work with each of you on the council to help bridge those relationships and form those relationships where our legislators can call us if they have needs or we can reach out to them if we have input on legislation. Our Legislative Dinner last year, January 6th, was a new form for us. It was cold. It was outdoors, but it was a great interaction for everyone, as it was one of our more -- our highest-attended events because it didn't compete with morning or afternoon commitments. So we're working on scheduling our Legislative Dinner here for the next session.
Indoors.
So let's talk about some major themes that we expect to come forth this session. We know that budget and revenue surplus is always -- in recent years has been a big focus. We've had several billion dollars of excess revenue in each of the last few years. As I looked at the latest report from the JLBC Joint Legislative Budget Committee, we have over a billion dollars of excess revenue that is available to the state. However, it's interesting because there's only 160 million available after you look at everything that's been committed. So you've got one-time funds, and then you don't have a lot of money that's available in the commitments. So there's going to be some discussions about long-term financial planning with this new legislature. When we talk about the budget and revenue surplus, it's inevitable that we're going to be discussing budget and tax reform. So we've got several taxes that our city depends on. We've got the food tax. We've got the residential rental tax. We have construction sales tax. These taxes are hot topics every year that the legislature wants to revoke from cities and towns. One of the strongest staples of Arizona cities and towns is our Model City Tax Code, and that Model City Tax Code is up for renewal this year. So it's going to be very important that we also protect our ability to have a variety of taxing resources available to cities and towns so that you, as a council, can decide what you want to tax and to what rate you want to tax, and that diversity is important. Affordable housing is a hot topic that came up last year. We know that there are several industries that are blaming affordable housing against cities, that cities are slowing down the process or rejecting new subdivisions, and there's a lot of different -- as we've had a study committee during the interim session, there's been a lot of things that have come to light. Labor's been very expensive. Materials have been hard to come by. There's a lot of challenges in the industry that increase costs, all while cities and towns have kept their permit fees relatively neutral over the last couple of years, and we're going into a deeper study on that. So I would expect several pieces of legislation that come out that will require cities to improve the access for affordable housing through regulation. Land use planning is very similar. There's going to be several bills that we expect to come out that will require cities to make it easier, eliminate planning and zoning commissions, eliminate city council review, so that land acquisition and zoning can be more streamlined. And then finally homelessness. We know that homelessness is becoming a pandemic. It is a pandemic. We've done our part in trying to address that. The state has increased their investment, but there's much more that we need to do. And so we expect there to be some preemption bills that will require cities to address homelessness by reducing the population. Question is, is will it be an unfunded mandate or will it be a funded mandate? And traditionally, we see unfunded mandates coming from the legislature. So a couple bills that we will be focusing on at the direction of the city council. Last year, in this presentation, the council directed Intergovernmental Programs to go and seek legislation that requires -- that eliminates the requirements for cities and towns to post public notices in the newspaper if we do so on our own city website, social media, or any form of electronic communication. This year, we introduced a League Resolution to the League of Arizona Cities and Towns supporting the same legislation, and that was adopted by all 91 cities and towns and will be a part of the League's legislative agenda. So I'll provide some additional support as we go and introduce that bill again this next year. Legislative priorities: These legislative priorities have stayed the same over the last several years. Again, it provides us the flexibility to be able to go and interact with our legislators and to use your assistance in that endeavor. So our legislative priorities remain fiscal sustainability, economic development, land use planning, military preservation, neighborhoods, public safety, transportation, and water. So as we have legislation that addresses those topics, you can look to the weekly updates to determine how we are -- to see how we are addressing those pieces of legislation. And please reach out to me if you have any questions or want to be -- if want to participate in some of the outreach efforts or the advocacy. So one thing before I wrap up, I do want to point out, I know there's a lot of defense that we play at the legislature, but over the last couple of years, we've used our relationships to run -- to pass legislation as well. A few years ago, Councilmember Clark requested that the city seek legislation to add a municipal representative on the state liquor board, and after a couple of years of efforts, that passed. Two years ago, we ran a bill at the request of staff to allow cities and towns to repurpose existing municipal bonds if there's some excess capacity. That bill passed in our first year. Last year, we ran a bill assisting legislative Joanne Osborne in providing some additional military support, so state licensers. If you relocate to Arizona, you have an occupational license. The state has always allowed -- and over the last several years, they've allowed individuals to come and transfer their license, but there's still a financial component. You have to pay the fee. And under some legislation we passed last year for a three-year pilot, we're going to waive -- the state will now waive that initial fee to encourage the spouse to get into the workforce, get all the accreditation, and then if the family stays, it's up to the spouse then to pay the renewal fee, which is every few years, depending on the industry. So we've had several great pieces of legislation that have passed. We look forward to running legislation this year with the public posting bill. We also know that we have to be on our game and be ready to defend some of our biggest priorities, which is maintain local control and taxation. So with that, our Intergovernmental Programs website is going through a process of being updated. Please give us some time. We now know that our legislators have been identified just in the last week. So we're going to be going through and updating our legislative districts. We'll put our new map on there, as well as our federal changes as well. Any questions so far?
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you. Wasn't I paying attention? Did you go over Slide 10, Prop 400 extension?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Tomachoff. Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, as I mentioned a couple of weeks ago before the election, actually, I think it was Election Day, there was -- there has been discussion about seeking a special session for -- to address Proposition 400 and the education expenditure limitation. As I'm hearing around the Capitol from friends, from colleagues, from legislators with our Democratic governor appointed, voted in by the voters, it doesn't look like Governor Ducey is looking to run a special session. There's an expectation that that's going to be a priority of Governor-elect Hobbs, and it's going to be up to cities now to use that relationship to try to help her and get enabling legislation through next year. So I don't expect Proposition 400 to have a special session. I was at the League of Arizona Cities and Towns today, talking to Executive Director Tom Belshi, and one thing that's different that we can expect next year is that the League is going to take a more active role. The League didn't take as active of a role last year because it was a Maricopa County initiative. Now that the message is out that the rural communities stand to lose a lot more than Maricopa County cities if there is no tax in place, now that there's the fear that if this tax goes away, that we're all going after the same tranche of funds, the rural communities have been encouraging the League to get more involved in supporting Proposition 400, and I heard as early as today that that's an expectation.
So, Mayor, if I could, so, I mean, probably the strategy is happening through MAG and through the League on identifying potential legislators to be running this bill and getting it -- is that what's happening?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that is the biggest challenge, is who wants to put their name on that bill? Those who -- you know, Tyler Pace, who ran that bill in the Senate, is no longer with us at the Senate. He lost his primary race. And Frank Carroll, we're working with, who represents -- now represents Peoria Surprise Sun City, Sun City West. So there is discussions of who's going to put their name on that and how is leadership going to allow -- you know, how are they going to support that if they're going to double assign it or give it a hearing or how that goes.
Right. Mayor, and just lastly then, it's going to depend on whether or not Representative Carroll is still the Chair of Transportation. Who's going to be on what committee? Who are the chairs? What's the best strategy to try to make sure that it sees the light of day?
Absolutely, yes. All right. Going back, so we do have our website. Again, that website's being updated with new maps, new legislators, contact information, but our legislative agenda, contact information, lobbying reports remain the same. So now I stand for questions.
I don't think you have any more questions. Really, we can't do a whole lot with Prop 400 extension till we know the assignment of the committees. That's really the main thing right now. And renewing and rebuilding and building brand-new relationships with the legislature. All right. Is that all you got? All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Item two, please.
Discussion regarding Coyotes Boulevard Name Change.
Mayor, members of the council, here to assist on presentation for item number three will be Brent Stoddard, Deputy City Manager. As you recall, two is removed off of the agenda, so we are now going to number three. I just want to make note of that on the -- on your agenda. So as you recall, at the last -- my last city manager report, I mentioned that I had received a letter from both Yam Properties and the Renaissance Hotel making a request for the city to consider a name change of Coyote Boulevard. This is a short road that comes off of 95th to the arena. There's only two properties that actually use this as a address, and so they made the request as being the two properties that are impacted by this. And so from there, I'll turn this over to Brent, and he'll kind of walk you through the process.
Great, thank you, Kevin. Mayor and council, as Kevin said, there's only two properties that are legally associated with a name of Coyotes Boulevard, and both of those entities are the ones that are requesting a name change. The timing works out well for the city because as part of our -- some of our Super Bowl improvements, we had programmed the budget and the programming of some of the illuminated signs that are in that sports entertainment district to be replaced. If you've been out there recently, you've seen there. Some of them are kind of burned out, faded, and so we had kind of put it up as long as possible. A name change now, those boxes are already ordered, and so a name change at this point will allow us to simply customize that name so that it could be incorporated, so that when they install it for a time before the Super Bowl, all of the names would be different out there. So ultimately, the process is pretty simple because it's a commercial development, and both of the businesses that are on it are requesting a name change. If the council gives consensus of a name, then I would bring it back. It will happen as a resolution to the council on -- we can do it on the December 13 voting meeting, and that'll allow us then to start customizing the boxes. I said the boxes have already ordered, but to customize the name in it. In discussions with the two property owners, they have suggested the name Entertainment Boulevard. Of course, that decision about a name is fully in the hands of the council. You have the authority to determine street names in this city. So Mayor and council, we would hand it over to you for a discussion. Again, the recommendation from the property owners was Entertainment Boulevard, but that is simply a recommendation only.
Discussion? Questions? Questions?
The -- how much of that property, if anybody can answer, how many of -- how much of the Westgate property belonged to the Pendergast family? Does anybody know?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I do not know.
Can you find out?
Yeah, we can find out.
Because if it's significant, I would suggest considering Pendergast Boulevard or something of that nature. I think they're a significant family in our community, but if you can find that out, I don't think we decided that today.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I actually do have a question. Do we know how long it takes Google Maps to update, and is there a way to expedite that? That would be my only concern, is that it might create some confusion for people that are looking for Coyotes Boulevard, if that's what Google tells them and there is no Coyotes Boulevard. So I don't know what the answer to that is. Do you know?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, it's a question that I asked our GIS team. They said that nowadays, they can make updates and improvements to map pretty quickly. So the faster the council takes action, of course, it allows us a faster time for implementation on those, but there will be a series of steps that we'll take, including notifying the USPS, the postal service, and then we'll also be immediately notifying all of the Maps, Bing Maps, Apple Maps, all of the different internet map and app venues that people use to get around. So it's anticipated that the change would be able to take place fast enough so that when people are coming to a Super Bowl, putting in an address, that it would be updated to the current address.
Okay, so, Mayor, so a two-month timeline should be achievable?
Yeah, our understanding is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Who are the two business addresses that would be changed?
The Renaissance Hotel and Spa, Renaissance Glendale Hotel and Spa, and then Yam Properties has a -- has a property on the just west of the -- it would be just east of the Renaissance, where there's currently -- it's going to be developed, so that business is not in there. And then I believe that McFadden's -- I mean, the mailing goes to Westgate, but McFadden's has an -- has a address of Coyotes Boulevard, but that is a Westgate kind of property, so...
So the recommendation of Entertainment, was that discussed with those owners, and were they in agreement with that?
Yeah, so the discussion that Kevin and I had with both of those entities was for Entertainment Boulevard. That's what they had recommended jointly to the council. We, of course, told them, and they understood that it would be at your discretion, and there was a couple of the names that were considered, but Entertainment was the one that rose to both of their priority lists. The road north of that is Westgate, and then this south road would be Entertainment, so it's kind of Westgate Entertainment. They felt like it fit the theme, the energy, the things that they were trying to create in that district. There were a couple of their names to be considered that were more kind of party or big event-oriented. I think the Renaissance was concerned that when people were booking a hotel, if they saw -- you know, if somebody saw an address of Party Boulevard or something, they might be like, "Well, I'm looking for -- I want to be close to the excitement, but I also want to have a quiet hotel room, not necessarily on Party Boulevard." And so they had felt that after kind of going back and forth and discussing a few things, it was pretty clear their recommendation to the council was, for their standpoint, was Entertainment Boulevard.
Yeah, I personally, I don't think that's the sexiest name that they could have come up with, but I understand their thought process, and they're the ones that are going to have the expense of changing addresses and letterhead and all that. If they're willing to accept that, I personally don't have a problem with that. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, you know, just as a reminder, because we went through this exercise with the renaming of Bethany Home Road in the Entertainment District, and the council collectively, you know, felt that, you know, doing something that kind of continues to reinforce the brand of what we're trying to build within the Entertainment District was, you know, was important. And so I think there's a -- look, there's a whole host of names that we could do. I think from a staff perspective, we understand where our -- where the Renaissance and the Yam Properties are coming from. They'd like to do something that just continually reinforces that this is about what we're building that's there. So -- but I agree, you don't want to get -- I think what Brent said is you don't want to have something that goes over the top in terms of being turned into a negative. And so, yeah, it's not overly sexy, but it doesn't push the envelope either way.
And Mayor, you did bring up a good point. We did confirm with both of these businesses that if the council -- because it would be a council action, if you legislatively changed the name of this property, would they be picking up the expenses? Because there's going to be some expenses on their part to change, whether it's in tax documents, legal type of stuff, and they confirmed to us, yes, they would. They're requesting the name change, and therefore, they would not be looking for the city to -- they wouldn't be asking for any assistance on that. They would pick up the full cost, whatever that may be on their part.
Personally, I don't have a problem with that name. Again, if we're not putting out money for it, and they're doing it, and it does reinforce exactly what we've been saying for a long time, sports and entertainment areas, so... Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would simply say that this is their request. They're requesting Entertainment Boulevard. They're going to pay the freight for the name change. I certainly support it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Melner?
Yeah, I would also be in support of the name change as recommended.
At this point, it sounds like it, yeah.
Well, I'll chime in then. No, I think it's a great idea. It is. We've been calling sports entertainment for years, and fits right in. Good name.
Okay, so I will bring that resolution to the council on December 13.
Yeah, but before going further, Mr. Turner, you have any comments?
Mayor, the time delay between here is probably a little problematic, but I would -- my only suggestion would be maybe to consider Entertainment Avenue instead of Boulevard, because that does send to a lot of longtime residents the reinforcement that it is in the West Valley, and it also has kind of a nice ring to it.
Okay, either way, would you agree with the consensus?
Yeah, so I can agree with the consensus.
You got what you need? Thank you. Okay, item three.
Downtown --
Item four, I'm sure.
Downtown Campus Reinvestment Project Update.
Mayor, members of the council, as promised, this is our monthly update on both the continuity of operations and the downtown campus reinvestment project. So again, want to remind you, there are actually -- there's six icons, but there's a total of seven buildings, because on the -- within the Civic Center campus are both the Annex and the Bead Museum. And I'd like to walk you through kind of a status of where... And I'd like to walk you through kind of a status of where these are at. Just as a overall reminder is that all the planning has now been done, as you will see, of the seven buildings, five are totally in completed design and two are, are still in the planning, or design phase, excuse me. We have two where construction's been completed, that is Ripstick and Airport. And then we're substantially complete on the Sign Building. I'm going to walk you through each of the individual buildings. Again, you'll notice up in the upper left-hand corner, the key thing to, I think from your perspective and your oversight role is to make sure, how are we doing within budget that's been appropriated? How are we doing within the scope? And how are we doing in terms of the schedule? Those are the three things that always work together on a project. With regards to the Sign Building, you can see since our last photograph that we showed you that we're now starting to really take shape in terms of this space. We are awaiting a few things, but ongoing is the millwork, carpeting, ceiling and lighting. We are awaiting some aluminum storefront doors to complete this, but we will be substantially complete in December. And furniture and fixtures and equipment will be installed between Christmas and New Years. This will allow then the city attorney's office to work on a calendar and a schedule that meets his needs to probably move in sometime in January. The Adult Center, again, we had some construction delays on this. And really what we were trying to do is the alignment of our subcontractors in addition to, we had some material delivery issues. And so you want to make sure that as subcontractors come on schedule, that you also have the materials ready to go. And so there's been a little bit of a, of a delay in getting them onboard, but we're still seeing substantial completion in early April. And this will not and should not impact the established move schedule that we've shared with the council. The Bead Museum is in permit review and we anticipate construction will start in mid-January. In Annex, design is now 75% complete and our goal will be to submit it to permits by mid-December and start construction shortly thereafter. Again, just looking here at some of the, kind of where we're at with our milestone project, everything continues to be moving forward in a, in a, in a good process. I want to compliment our design team and our project team. They're really doing a great job of keeping this going forward. And I just want to call out, I mean, we've, if you noticed, I think the, to show what a great job they've been doing is the fact that the budget has not changed on this and the schedule hasn't. And we all know, I know the vice mayor does this as a daily basis, that, that schedule and costs are being impacted almost everywhere because of the current environment. So for us to continue to be tracking right on schedule, I think is a really, with Darren and all of our design team, Darren oversees our continuity of operations plan and of course Eddie is, is our project lead. So with that, be glad to talk about any questions you might have. We did have our community engagement meeting. And again, this was, as I mentioned last time, that was successfully commenced on October 26th. There were a number of, we had a good turnout of citizens that came out for the presentation. I thought our design firm and their consultants did a wonderful job of answering questions and presenting this project. There were certainly some emerging themes that we saw that came about. Obviously, the, there was a lot of concern about the park, making sure we maintain it as a park. They also want to see events to continue to happen within the park. They, you know, activation was a word that was used a lot during these meetings, meaning that we want to kind of keep growing a more vibrant environment that's there. And they also raised the issue of consideration for public restrooms. And so, but those were the two kind of, or the four prevailing themes that were there. Next up is just, we're going to continue to wrap up our design and planning phase of this. And again, we're moving forward very well there. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
Thank you, mayor. I have a couple of questions. Are we going to be presented with a little bit more refined data on the stakeholder engagement than these briefings, monthly briefings, or?
Is there, is there particular information?
Well, I want to know, like especially like, for me, my, the biggest consideration is budget, obviously. That's kind of my focus always. But I mean, you know, not just the park and activities, but the actual, I mean, were the, I wasn't at the meeting, but were they, were they asked about actual construction and, you know, timelines and things like that? Or I just wonder, I was under the impression that the stakeholder engagement was, there's an online survey also, right? And the, the public meeting, are we going to be presented with more refined data that we could actually use? Because moving forward with the scope, I think that there's going to still be an opportunity for council input, or at least that's what I thought. So I'd like to have that stakeholder data.
So mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. So again, as a, as a reminder, we have a number of different places for both council and community input. This particular meeting was really to kind of get their overall vision and to lay out kind of what the, at a very more high level. But we will have other community stakeholder engagements where we'll have more specificity once we've come back to the council and started to narrow down what the options are. We are not yet ready to talk more specific budget-wise. They, you know, they're still diving into a number of different kind of concepts with Oakland Construction. And, but we are hoping to have that in early January. And then we'll be coming back to the council to kind of show where we think the project budget is. And then at some point, that information, as we get decisions and input from the council, we'll be, you know, reaching out to the community. So I'm not sure there's a lot of data per se, other than, but I'll, but I can certainly ask the council consultant to put together more information on that meeting. I know it was also available online, I believe. And we could also be glad to send you the, the link as well, if you find that would be helpful for you.
Mayor? The, the link to the survey?
The, the link to the meeting itself.
Okay, but isn't there, there's an online survey as well, isn't there? I thought there was.
Eddie, or?
Mayor?
Hold on.
I mean, generally speaking, that type of data is a little easier to refine because it's a standard set of questions.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Councilmember Tomachov, yes, there was a link to the survey. I got to check to see if it's still live, but it was active for several days after the meeting to collect any additional questions or, or comments that came from the audience that couldn't attend in person.
So mayor, my question is, is that data going to be, be provided to us? That was in the, because those people weren't at the meeting, but they did weigh in on, I mean, I could watch the meeting and see what they said, but I, I'd like to know what, you know, what kind of other input they provided.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachov, we can certainly collect that data for you.
Okay.
It's a matter of just pulling it from the, from the polling system that they use, the platform.
Okay.
And collecting the information.
Thank you. And so I guess if there, if we don't have, you know, a full, complete set of stakeholder data that we're, I mean, we're going to want it all, you know, all together, I guess. I understand that. I didn't know where we were because there's, the stakeholder engagement is showing, I guess just one dot on each of the, of the three, of the three phases. My concern is, is cost. And I'm hearing, you know, numbers of 100, 105 million. So I'm, I'm growing more and more concerned by the day of where this, you know, how, the scope of this project and if we're going to, at least for my comfort level, to make sure that, you know, this was presented to us as a $70 million project. And if it gets up over $100 million, that's a lot, a lot more than what we were planning for. And that's going to have a ripple effect in other places in the city. So generally speaking, we're presented something like that. I mean, obviously you can't plan that far ahead. And, and this is a real precarious time to be trying to tackle something of this size because of, you know, the economy, you know, we could be possibly going into a recession. So I'm very concerned about the budget. And like I said, I'm hearing other numbers thrown around that are way more than $70 million. So that's my, that's my number one concern here. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov, I've not been presented with numbers. Have you heard this information from our project team or our consultants?
No, I have not. That's not right. Sorry, that's not where I heard it.
Okay, so.
I have heard numbers thrown around that it's, it's what we're looking at, what we're doing. I mean, I asked the question, mayor, sorry, I didn't go through the chair. I asked the question a long time ago is, what, what is the reason for evacuating the building? And are we, are we skinning the building? And if we're skinning the building, why are we skinning the building? Those are the, those are the kind, and I haven't gotten any answers to those questions. So, and I do have constituents that are very supportive of the project, but have stressed to me about that this has been presented to us as a $70 million project. Generally, we have a built-in 10% contingency, so $77 million, for sure under $80 million. And because it's been a couple of years since we first started talking about this, and I just did a remodel project of my own, I mean, it doesn't take a whole lot for cost to escalate way beyond where you thought you were going to be. So that is my, my biggest concern is that if we have to value engineer and scale things back, that we're willing to do that, to keep it as close to on-budget as possible. Because obviously, for another 20, 30, whatever, 35 million, that has a pretty big ripple effect of, you know, downstream ripple effect on other things in our CIP.
So again, I.
Ms. Phelps, one second. You can have a seat.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So it is why I asked the question, because what I, you know, there's, I can't control what others may be. I'm not sure how somebody else, if it wasn't our staff, if you've not heard it from me, if you've not heard it from our design consultants or our contractor, I would just caution you to be careful. I don't know, I mean, I don't know where those numbers are coming up from. Now, what I will say is this, when we brought this project to the council almost a year and a half ago and started looking at the budget, obviously, a lot has happened. We fully do expect that the number is going to change when we get down and get down into more level of detail. I have no idea what that level of change will be. We know what we can afford and our design team and our contractor knows what we generally think we have the ability to, to build. And so we'll, once we get, start getting numbers, we'll work on the value engineering and the scope changes necessary. But to say, you know, publicly that it's, that we're saying it's 100 or 105 or more million dollars, I just want to be clear, that information hasn't come from your project team or from the city manager's office. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but it just may be more speculation. But we're going to, we're very tuned in to the cost. It is something that is a frequent conversation. I know Eddie and, and the team will acknowledge this. We are very much wanting to make sure that we make really sound business decisions so we can manage this scope and keep it as close to the project. But to, I mean, from a realistic standpoint, a lot has changed since we first kind of baseline this budget to the council. But we still remain optimistic we can deliver a good project that will fit within what the council's view of a good investment of the public tax dollars are.
Okay. Vice Mayor next, then you.
I'll go to Joyce. Councilmember Clark was.
Thank you.
All right, you got it. Thank you, mayor. Some of the questions Councilmember Tomachov asked was, was some of mine, but just to further that one before I go to the next one. I was part of the stakeholders meeting, so it was a really good meeting, well-attended. However, I did, I thought we were going to get the data back. However, it sounds like we may. Are you expecting staff to get back to some of those individuals who had questions and haven't had answers? So how are we going to do that? So what's your plan to get an update to those folks? Is it a second meeting? Because right now, I've been told that the meeting was good, but we asked a bunch of questions. We have, they had suggestions, but they don't have any input back to them and that's what was expected.
So mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, again, this was kind of a listening session, which is how it was really, to kind of get the input. There may not be answers yet for a lot of those questions, but I will ask our, I'll ask our project team, our, you know, our design team to see where we're at with that and to remind them that as these answers become available, to make sure they do reach back out and communicate that to the, to those who had asked the questions.
You got it noted. My next question is with regard to budget. I can tell you right now that if, if our budget was 70 million, we're not, unless our 110% goal is to be under that, that ain't going to happen. So in the RFP, what, did, did, did the developer or the builder provide us with a gross max price that they can build all of this with? So did we ever receive that? Do we know what the gross max price is going to be for this project? And then we can start from there and back up.
Mayor, members of the council, because we did not enter into design, we only had concepts. That is really what we're working on now is to come up and to refine the design, bring it back to the council with the discussion. But they, they really didn't have anything to which they could provide a guaranteed maximum allowable contract, a GMAC kind of approach. But we'll eventually get to that point. It was just premature to give them a design when the council hasn't weighed in, when the community hadn't weighed in.
And I understand and, and seriously, if, like I said, 110 or 200% isn't our goal to be under budget, yeah, with, with what's happened in the market with materials and delays, yeah, we definitely need to expect that we're going to pay more than 70. But if, if at the appropriate time, you get a gross max price, then yeah, I think the council needs to know. Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, mayor. I'm going to bring a little reality back to this conversation, I think. I watched the initial community meeting. It was very well done. There was no confusion as to the purpose of that meeting. The purpose of that meeting was to solicit from the general community what they envisioned for the, a new city hall. That included not only the outside elements, but what they, services they would expect to see within City Hall. I mean, there were ideas from having a coffee shop, a museum, of course, the One Stop Center. There were all kinds of ideas. It was billed as simply an attempt to solicit ideas from the community. It was also clearly stated that when there was a definitive concept, the design group would again meet with the community. That was clearly said. So that's point number one. Now, as to the urban myth of 105 million, we don't have a design. How can anybody be claiming to know what this project will cost when we do not even have a design? That's ridiculous. Lastly, if any member of council wants to stay within the $70 million figure, then when the design comes to us and it costs over $100 million, that's the time you offer your suggestions as to what you would like to cut out of the project so that you stay within the $70 million, if that is your goal. There are ways to deal with this, but right now, there's a great deal of speculation and second-guessing. And nobody knows at this point what's going on until we see from the design staff what their conceptuals are. And I suspect they will be offering more than one conceptual for us, for staff and for the public to look at and to weigh in on. So we're a long way from talking about what the eventual and final cost is at this point. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Turner, do you have any comments?
Well, sorry. I have concerns about the potential for price escalation, mayor. I'm still uncomfortable with like our Ballpark Boulevard project, for example. This seems to have escalated a lot in price from where we first started and may still have expenses coming. So I do think that we need to keep a close eye on, on this inflation and, and the time. If we are headed into a slower economy, we will get better prices and better availability of material and labor as the economy slows and our money spent can help keep the, the local economy afloat. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, mayor. Well, listen to the comments that were just made from Councilmember Clark. Let me just rebuttal those. When a constituent of mine asked me for information and answers, I'm going to make sure that I ask them on this dais. I have the right to do that. And Councilmember Clark is not suggesting that I don't. But yeah, I know exactly what the, the meeting content was. I opened the meeting, but when they have, they have questions and I'm going to give them their answers. And so I hope that our city manager provides that. And then the second thing is, you can fool kindergarten, but you can't fool me. I, I opened the meeting. But when they have, they have questions, and I'm going to give them their answers. And so I hope that our city manager provides that. And then the second thing is, you can fool a kindergarten, but you can't fool me. There are conceptual designs that we can get price on. We have excellent staff here that knows pricing, and we have a developer or a builder that we got on board that can give us a price close to what it's going to be. Yes, they can. Shy of inflation, that's another problem. But they can give us conceptual designs. My gut feeling is, and I'm pretty comfortable, my gut feeling, is that you probably have one. I probably wouldn't share it with us either at this point, because it can change significantly. But my gut feeling is that you probably have one there somewhere. Conceptual designs and conceptual, that's fine that you don't have one. You can shake your head. But here's the deal, you have a conceptual design that a, that a builder can build a budget for, plus or minus. Again, I'd be supportive to not publicize that at this point, because it could change significantly with, with material shortages and cost increases and inflation. But yeah, no, it is possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I watched the engagement meeting, and I thought it was very well-done also. The, I was very impressed with the facilitators. I was very impressed with the openness and the format in which they presented it to allow the community. And I really would encourage the entire community to engage in these meetings. There are going to be many more coming forward, from what I understand, that we really need to, we want to get a conceptual idea of what is wanted and what is not wanted in this redesigned project. And so, again, I just wanted to compliment the, the consultant, I guess, who ran the, the meeting. I thought they did an exceptional job, and I expect the same type of quality in the future. And I, and I get this concept regarding the cost. You know, costs typically are going to go up in the future. However, I, I'm more on the side of, let's kind of wait until we get a more finite conceptual idea of what we're going to try to do. And I would have to agree with Councilmember Clark that, as a council, we have given a, been given an estimate of what we thought this would be, and the $70 million project, and that's the one that we told our constituents. And so if we come back with a cost significantly higher, we need to have a serious discussion as to what we want to change if we want to keep it at that level. So I think we'll have an opportunity to do that, and, and I believe this council will make the right decision when that time does arrive. But in the meantime, I think we're on the right path. I really think the community engagement is critical for this project, and I think it's happening in a manner that will be beneficial for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Clark, I don't know whether it was intentional or not, but made my point. There were a lot of ideas thrown out there by people at the stakeholder meeting, and I don't know where to find, I couldn't watch the meeting when it was happening, and I don't know where to find it to watch it. But I would hope that those ideas that were thrown out there would be shared with us. That's what I'm asking for. I was not free that evening because I have another job, and so I did, was not able to watch the meeting, and I don't know where I can find it. So if someone can send me a link. But the idea, I thought of having the stakeholder engagement, was to provide that feedback back to us, and I haven't received it. So that was what my point was. And my second point was that I'm very concerned about the cost. That's all. I, and I, I wanted to put that out there, that I'm very concerned about the cost, and that hopefully we're, you know, we're presented, to me, it seems like if you're remodeling your house, you don't say, well, here's what I want to do. Just let me, just, you know, no matter how much it is, I'm, you, you, basically, you work with your design and your concepts and your budgets kind of at the same time. You don't, as you go along, and then you think, okay, because you don't want to come up with an entirely whole package and then start deleting things out of it. So to keep track of the costs, I just went through this process, keep track of the cost as you go along, so you have an idea of where you are and where you're going to be able to scale things back without changing the project too much. So that's what my concern is. I don't, I don't really, I still have a lot of questions about, I still have a lot of questions about why we're vacating the building and spending $7 million. So I'm supportive of the project, I just don't want it to get too out of control as far as the cost. And I would like to see the stakeholder feedback wherever I can get that. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that information. Again, I want to go back to my last comments on the project. Maybe I didn't do a good job of stating it. The vast majority, and by vast majority, 90% plus of the comments made at this October 26 meeting were around four themes. One, they wanted, there were a lot of comments to say we want to save the park. And so that people weighed in about the importance of having open space, green space, canopies, and so that was one of the major themes. The second is, also talked a lot about making sure that whatever we do with this project, that it will still facilitate the ability to do events. And they mentioned glitters in specific, but they mentioned other things as well. That was a large part of the comments coming in. The third was, was around this notion of, of keeping and growing and making our downtown more vibrant. So they wanted whatever we do with our campus to be, to, to communicate back to the broader community that this is a vibrant and kind of happening place. And then there was a little bit of comments made regarding public restrooms. That is where the bulk of the, of the, of the comments were, because we're still looking at, you know, kind of the major programming elements for the building itself. We will get the information for you. We'll make sure that as we do few, future community outreach meetings, and if there's data being taken down, we'll make sure that we have the consultant kind of capitalize those comments and provide that back to the council for, you know, for comment. So we'll, again, we thought it was a good meeting. We'll continue to keep the council updated. But I think really in terms of being able to start getting a better feel for the, the financial elements of this project, that likely, I, I've been told I won't be presented with information until probably sometime in early January, is when the, when our contractor will start looking at some of the core elements of this project and be able to get a pricing for it. So with that, that concludes my report on, on this item.
And I guess my two cents worth, this reminds me of a, planning a family vacation, driving across the United States. And you've got X amount of money, you don't know what fuel's going to cost by the time you go. And you got to start figuring out all the things that you're going to have to buy and the places you want to go to and how much time you have. And it comes down to budget. I mean, it literally just comes down to budget, and that's what we are going to have to face here. We, we'd like everything, but what, what do we need? Not necessarily what we want, but what do we need? What, what's it going to cost to, to get the job done? I, I do agree with Councilmember Turner. I think with a recession, I don't think it's likely that we're going into a recession. I believe that we are in a recession. I don't know how severe it'll be, but that does tend to force prices down, which could be to our benefit, could also be to our benefit that now there's more workers available too. So we can't predict it. If we could, we'd all be trillionaires, and we wouldn't be sitting here at this council meeting right now. So I, I would like everybody to just kind of relax a little bit. Everybody's ideas are important, everybody's concerns are, are valid, but let's let staff do their job. Is that all we got?
Yes, sir.
Okay. City manager report. Mr. Phelps.
Well, we're, obviously, as we get into the, the time of year that we all enjoy living here in Arizona, things are really starting to pick up from staff's perspective in terms of different events. And just want to talk about this last weekend in particular, which I think is a good indicator of just how much we have going on. First, you know, we had, this past weekend, we had the Movies by Moonlight drive-in, and this was in conjunction with ASU West. The numbers we've got back were there were 110 cars that attended with about 400 total patrons. We did three rounds of bingo, giving away prizes over 20 winners, and ASU kind of helped provide those. So there was, you know, kind of interactive with the cars that were there as well. And we also raffled off two gift baskets, which were provided by, by the city. We also had our Touch a Truck program, which again, is an event that we do every year. It continues to grow, and it was estimated to be about 7,500 people attended this year's Touch a Truck, which is, we believe, the highest total to date since this happened. The area was just totally packed with families, you know, and exhibitors that were there. Again, we had an informational booth, in addition, some other exhibitors who gave away, gave away certain things. And again, lots of families, and it was just a, really a positive event. And of course, last night, the council got a chance to, you know, to turn on the lighting for, for downtown, for our downtown holiday lighting and Glendale Glitters. And again, I wasn't able to make it, but I understand there was an excellent turnout last night. And so we're, we're looking forward to really welcoming thousands of visitors here between now and January to come and see our downtown. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
No report. Thank you.
Any council items of special interest? Councilmember Clark.
None. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hugh?
None, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today.
Councilmember Turner?
Not today, Mayor.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, well, I do have one, and we just were recently in Kansas City, three councilmembers and myself. And one of the things that we had a chance to visit, and I was, I was actually really excited by being able to see it, was a veterans issue that they had, where I know that Councilmember Clark loves this name, but they're tiny homes. Incredibly well-done. I, I was blown away because I haven't exactly had the highest opinion of the thought of a tiny home until I got to see this. They're temporary, there's zero cost to the veterans, and it's all 100% volunteer and all donations. The, the city participates, but the city is not in charge of it. I'd like, I'd like researching on staff about the possibility of bringing that to Glendale. It solves a lot of problems that we have, homelessness, as they were talking about, veterans is a good portion of it. The thing that was most exciting about it is the numbers that they had given us, that 85% of these people, once they've gone through the program, no longer come back as homelessness, which is incredibly impressive. There's almost no programs that I know of that have that type of success rate. And at the same time, it's no cost to the city, other than what the city wants to participate in. So I would like to see the city participate in it. I don't know if any of the other councilmembers want to add any, any other thoughts on what they've seen with that, but that would be, that would be my wish.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I too was, was quite impressed with the project. It's called Veterans Community Project. And the, the first project that they did was in Kansas City, and they've gone to Colorado. They've been to, they, they've done four, four other projects. So Colorado's just now coming out of the ground.
Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Mm-hmm. And, and all, they, they come, they, what they've done is they, the people go to your city, and they help you with a capital campaign. It was quite impressive, and the success rate was extremely impressive. So I support investigating further into Veterans Community Project and, and maybe trying to get something done with them to help our veterans. Thank you, Mayor.
Melner.
Thank you, Mayor. I too was quite impressed with what I saw. I was, had kind of a negative thought pattern regarding the small homes. But when I saw what they could do for a small group of the population that really needs it, I was impressed with the ability to really make a difference in people's lives. And so I too would support investigating this further.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay. Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Your guys have it, do have it. That motion carries. Council meeting's recessed. Mr. Turner, I don't, I guess you'll have to call back to get into the executive session.
We're going to call you.
Or they're going to call you.
Thanks.
Okay. Council meeting's recessed.